Welcome.
Mayor Slater.
Here.
Councilmember Campbell.
Here.
Mayor Lieutenant Fleming.
Here.
Councilmember Henderson.
Here.
Councilmember McGinnis.
Here.
Councilmember Pennington.
Here.
Councilmember Teetz.
We'll hold off for a little bit on, excuse me, probably traffic, I guess. This evening we have three items to discuss and as we know, we are limited to discussion on those three items only, so I will turn it over to Senior Andrew Kichnik and I believe the first item is C1 with fire.
Mayor and City Council, thank you very much and welcome back from two days ago. This is part of our Working Together series, as you pointed out at the last meeting, and a prelude to the budget process that's yet to come. Today, tonight, we have three excellent presentations that follow the same format that you, we followed the other night and will continue to follow through the process. So, since we have a lot to get going with, to go over tonight, I want to introduce your friend Chief Nelson for the first presentation on the fire department.
Good evening, Mayor, members of council.
Good evening.
Start, we always start with a mission statement and focus on where we're going, what we're doing. I won't read it to you, but if you look at the key parts of it, basically our fire protection, rescue, hazardous mitigation services to the community, we accomplish it with volunteer and career professional force and our tools in doing that are basically fire prevention, public education, emergency operations and planning. It's not a mistake to start that order and talk more about that as we move forward. Staffing overview. Two thousand and eight, we had fourteen career employees and now we're down to eleven. Interestingly enough, in that process of doing that, we recognized back in two thousand and seven that our existing structure in the career force wasn't sustainable. What we looked at, we had ten staff lieutenants that were multi-trained, they were all inspectors, instructors, fire officers, and obviously firefighters. We didn't think that that was going to be sustainable, basically due to the cost because since they're unionized, their wages are pegged basically with other similar positions in other communities. We created a position called a fire staff technician. That position basically is pegged at the pay rate of a firefighter in another community and literally they do one of those jobs. They may be an inspector, they may be an instructor depending on what focused work they may fall into. So, we recognized that early on, we changed our union contract, we flipped those positions and as you can see, as we started through attrition to eliminate staff lieutenants, we started to increase our number of staff technicians. So, that, again, we'll come back, we'll talk about that in a cross-ageing manner. Part-time folks, we have an office assistant and we use our volunteer firefighters that are interested and are available to work as fire staff assistants and basically we've increased their usage by the number of hours that we deploy them over that six-year period. One of the things that I'd like to point out is that our firefighters or our career staff all augment the volunteer firefighters, the volunteer forces firefighters. It's kind of like in the Marines, every Marine's a rifleman no matter what your job is. Okay, well, every firefighter in Troy is a firefighter, whether he's an inspector, a trainer, a chief. I drove a fire truck about eight weeks ago going to run because I happen to be standing in a station when to run with it. That's what you do. Our fire, our volunteer force basically has authorized the strength of one hundred and eighty, thirty-six command officers and one hundred and forty-four volunteer firefighters. We hover around that one hundred and sixty-five mark. We watch this very closely because obviously recruitment and maintaining our volunteer force is of paramount value to us. Just as anecdotal information, the average age of our volunteer firefighters is thirty-eight point one years of age and they have nine point six years of service on the average. Revenue, we're not a big revenue-producing department. We charge fees for various things that we do, permits for fire protection work, hazardous materials, occupancy permits, things like that. We do collect cost recovery when it's appropriate. We do that for certain types of hazardous material incidents where we have extraordinary costs for that incident, to deal with that incident and certain other types of things where traffic crashes caused by a DUI, we can try to get some reimbursement for supplies and things that we use in those. Typically, our revenue is about a hundred and fifteen thousand dollars a year. There had been discussion in years past about implementing some fees, like other cities had done, charge five hundred dollar fee for a house fire, charge two hundred and fifty dollars for a car fire, things like that, and based on previous council input, it goes down to the end. Cost reductions. We've made a number of them over the last twelve, four years or so. Two thousand and eight, as I mentioned, we created a new entry-level position. We also implemented the county radio system, Detroit Police and Fire Departments were the first two departments in the county to go live on that system in two thousand and eight. It was very timely for us because our public safety communication system was nearing its end of life and it was going to cost a lot of money to replace it. We now have a countywide system that everybody pays for on their cellphone and their landline phone. However, it doesn't come out of our budget, plus it has greatly enhanced interoperability among all public safety forces in Oakland County. In two thousand and ten, our Mutual Aid Association actually, which was established through the Urban Cooperation Act, basically became an entity. And that entity, through that entity, we began to consolidate special operations and for fires, special operations include tech rescue, hazmat, incident management teams, things that don't happen every day, but you have to be prepared to deal with. So, one of the first things we did is we took three local hazmat teams, one of them was Troy's, and we consolidated them into one regional team. So, now, instead of us having twenty-two, twenty-three people on a hazmat team between the police and fire departments, we now have about six people that are on a sixty-person team that basically responds throughout most of the county. Every fire department used to be responsible for technical rescue, basically building collapse, confined space rescue, trench rescue, and those types of disciplines. You would have to equip, train, and deploy to be able to handle those types of emergencies. We have created two tech rescue teams that we can now call. And again, they're made up of multi-departmented personnel so that no one department has to bear the brunt of the cost for that type of a response. And one of the newest things we've done is created a Type Four Incident Management Team. What an incident management team does is it focuses on coming to the assistance of an incident commander who is in a long-duration operation. Typically, our fire operations last two, three, maybe four hours. If we had a large tornado, if we had a very large hazardous material release, we may have an incident that lasts twenty-four, thirty-six hours. In that case, we need other overhead staff to come in and assist us in building operational plans for the next operational period, things like that. That's what an incident management team does. Again, it's multi-jurisdictional, so you don't take all of your folks and try to do that. You put the call out and we get fifteen or twenty people that come from all over the county and they come and help us to do that. They've all been through position-specific training and things like that to be able to function. Now, our team actually did go to Dundee two years ago for the tornado down there and they were also in Wayne for the building collapse. If you remember, there was an explosion in the furniture store in Wayne. We actually, we were called on there to assist Wayne County. The Troy Fire Staff Officers Association voluntarily eliminated longevity pay, even though a number of their members were eligible to get it. All of our sworn fire staff members are in the DC retirement plan, so nobody's left in the DB plan. We've eliminated three full-time positions, or twenty-three percent of our workforce. We eliminated a division assistant tree and two staff lieutenants. And that's of interest because we used to be organized in divisions. We had an operations division, we have a fire prevention division, fire investigation unit, training unit, we had all those traditional organizational units. We now have gone to what we call basically directed work groups. If we have a training function that we need to do, we bring in a person here, a person there, they have the expertise, they're responsible to a command officer on achieving that goal and then we may dissolve that work group if it's not a standing issue that we've got going, but we've done away with the traditional divisions that most organizations are familiar with. One of the unique things we did when we first did our union contract was we handled overtime differently in the fire department. Because the Fair Labor Standards Act allows firefighters to be scheduled for two hundred and twelve hours in a hundred, trying to remember the date and the number now, in a four-week period. What we do is if any of our folks work overtime for the first two hundred hours of that, they accumulate comp time on an hour-for-hour basis. After two hundred hours, once their comp time bank is at two hundred hours, they receive straight time pay on an hour-by-hour basis. So, that saves us considerable amount of money overpaying time and a half for anything over forty hours a week. Our volunteer fire incentive plan, the benefits have been frozen since two thousand and nine. We've eliminated three frontline fire pumping engines. For many, many years, we've had nine engines, three hundred-foot ladder trucks, three sixty-five foot ladder trucks, and one heavy rescue. We looked at our operational needs, we looked at ISO requirements, we looked at a number of different factors and we felt with the new engines that we've recently received that are basically more capable than the engines that they're replacing that were twenty years old, that we can go down to six engines, six, or three one-hundred-foot ladder trucks, three sixty-five foot ladder trucks, and one heavy rescue. So, basically, it's a net decrease of three vehicles. Those three vehicles, by not purchasing those or replacing those, will save two million dollars over the next ten years. We've also looked at some alternatives for training. It's very expensive to train a firefighter, has to be done in a state-approved academy. We have a cooperative recruit training agreement with Oakland Fire Training Institute, which is basically run through OCC. What happens there is because they utilize our training center part of the time for their fire academy, we get five free slots every year. Sometimes we have more than five recruits, so instead of paying the two thousand dollars a person that it would take to put them in the academy, we also belong to a cooperative with twelve other on-call fire departments in the northeast part of Oakland County that also run a fire academy. There, we don't pay anything, what we have to do is about once every seven weeks, we have to send an instructor up to do a training class. So, that's the way that we share with the other fire departments on operating that fire academy. Budget history. As you can see, our operating budget went up in two thousand and nine, started to decrease in ten, decreased more in eleven, decreased more in twelve, and in thirteen, it took a little spike there, but only because we transferred the Medical First Responder Contract with Alliance Mobile Health from the police department to the fire department. So, had we not done that, our budget would have been right about four million dollars for operating. Capital, those numbers are not representative only because in two thousand and eight, we were going to buy a pumper. We postponed that because we were looking at a new concept in a pumper and we carried that money over to two thousand and nine, so that's why there's a million dollars in two thousand and nine, it's the six hundred and eight from two thousand and eight, plus more money from two thousand and nine. We actually didn't buy them until two thousand and ten, so that's how you got to one point three million. Same thing happened in two thousand and eleven, we budgeted an engine, we carried that over to twelve and bought two, and then we just bought one more engine this year. So, our goal is to try to look at, and it's very difficult to do because, you know, what's a fire truck going to cost in fifteen years? Who knows? But what we try to do is level that out with a replacement plan that replaces them before they start to become maintenance nightmares and reliability. And the cost is one thing, for me, it's reliability. If that truck does not start, when you have an emergency at your house, it's basically, it's like we've blown the play, okay? The play isn't going to run the way it was mapped out in training, so we need to have reliable apparatus. Pressures and concerns. First of all, for us, is maintaining an adequate cadre of volunteer firefighters. Overall, in the country, there's been a reduction from a million volunteer firefighters to nine hundred thousand in the last ten years. Primarily, this is due to a number of factors. One, people are working more hours, you have two family wage earners, or two wage earners in a family now, so childcare gets to be an issue, we have increased state mandated and thoroughly mandated training, so it just, it becomes more difficult. It's not like it was in nineteen forty when they started the Troy Volunteer Fire Department, a bunch of folks got together and said, "We're going to do it," and they did it, okay? It wasn't, it wasn't that big a deal. Today, it is. So, we're concerned about maintaining our volunteer staffing. We're also maintaining, worried about maintaining our productivity in our career force. One of the things that we've worked with, with economic development, is basically their mantra of fast, fair, and predictable. So, when a developer comes to Troy, we can tell him rapidly and fairly and in a very predictable manner what he has to do. Well, as you're going to see in a moment, our customer service is starting to slide a little bit, only because we've had a tremendous uptick in activity with no additional staff, so something's got to give. The other issue with that is, is our inspectors that are doing this work still respond to fires, they still investigate fires, things like that. So, those are all things that take away from that primary function. Just to let you know, our career people all come from the ranks of the Troy Fire Department, the volunteer force, and find that that makes a very good fit because they're very in tune with the operation, they understand how our system works, which is, I have to add, considerably different than most fire departments operate. And we've had people in the past that have attempted to come and work as career employees that have not been able to make the transition from working for the Detroit Fire Department for fifteen years to coming to Troy, okay? It's worlds apart. Another pressure and concern, complying with federal and state mandates. Right-to-know and hazmat programs, we are mandated by law to require, to provide a site-specific plan for every facility that uses, produces, disposes of hazardous materials over a threshold limit. That means for each, they can't just say, "This is how we're going to handle all of them." It's site-specific by address and name of that facility. We currently have over two hundred of those facilities in Troy. So, logistically, that's a little bit of work. And as you can imagine with anything else, those things are changing on a day-to-day basis because technology changes, manufacturing changes, all those factors come into play and that makes us have to be on our toes to keep up with those plans. We also have a mandate to provide firefighter training, there are a number of subjects that have to be done annually, so we have to basically work that into our schedule to make sure we make that available to our, all of our folks. There's requirements for fire officer, command officer training that are mandated, so we have to address those. We're working on some innovative things now, trying to come up with some basically computer-based training because some of the things are things like review your right-to-know policy. Well, I don't have to sit with a PowerPoint in front of thirty firefighters and read a PowerPoint to them talking about the policy. What we want to do is have them go in online from home, review the policy, answer five questions about it, it logs them as completed and it allows us to utilize the time when we've got all the boots in one room to do hands-on team training, which is what we really need to focus on. And we have federal, state, and local inspection requirements that we have to perform. Basically, we have city code chart requirements, charter requirements, and certain other types of inspections. So, these are all things that we have to do. If we don't do it, there's potential liability, there's potential sanctions, there's things like that that can happen. We have always prided ourselves on being proactive. That's why in our mission statement, it's not an accident that public education and code enforcement and fire prevention come before emergency operations. It's a lot cheaper and a lot easier to prevent a fire than it is to respond to one and extinguish it. So, we use what we call the three Es, education, engineering, and enforcement, in a proactive mode to prevent fires. We've been pretty successful with that. Again, it's getting to be a little bit more challenging because now with an uptick in the economy and uptick in building occupancy and things like that, we have a lot more work to do to get out to these buildings that were mothballed a number of years ago and now are back in useful life. Just to give you an idea, our code enforcement activities with increased development and redevelopment, we've had a twenty-seven percent increase in plan reviews since two thousand and ten and a twenty-eight point five increase in permits issued since two thousand and ten. So, pretty good increase in workload. Maintain effective public education. We think that if you can educate a whole generation to be fire-safe and we've, this isn't something we dreamed up, if you look at Japan, you look at countries around the world that have a considerably lower fire loss than we do and they live in structures that are next to each other and are made out of balsa wood, how can that be? Well, it's basically, it's attitude. People become very fire-safe when you live in those types of environment. Here, it's have a fire, get a check, okay? That's the society that we've made, okay? So, public education programs are very important. We've had to scale back, we used to be in every school in Troy three times a year and now we've scaled that back to two times per year. The built environment. This is kind of interesting. Underwriters Laboratories did some studies to determine why are we having fire problems now that are different than we had in nineteen seventy? Well, for a number of reasons, what they have determined is that in nineteen seventy, you had nine hundred and three seconds to escape a fire in a single-family dwelling. So, you had fifteen minutes from the time that fire started before, you know, you could go around, you could collect all your pictures, you could, you could get, you know, you could move half your furniture out in fifteen minutes. Today, you have a hundred and twenty-six seconds from the time of ignition until that environment and that structure becomes untenable. So, why is that happening? It's basically because of what we put in our homes. We used to, in nineteen seventy, we had a lot of things that were made of natural wood, we had a lot of things that were made of natural fibers, and we had a lot of things that were made of metal. It's in rocket science, what have we got in our houses today? You know, solidified gasoline, petrochemicals, okay? That's basically what amounts to. So, what we're seeing is hotter, faster-developing fires and then when you couple that with lightweight construction technology that took off in about, with code changes in the seventies and eighties, we now have structures where we used to have a two-by-eight or a two-by-ten that was a floor joint. Today, we have an engineered truss, it's a piece of flakeboard with a two-by-four that sits on either side of it, and flakeboard is basically sawdust put together with flammable glue, okay? Now, these, they hold up, they're durable, they meet the code requirements, however, if you, as long as you can get out of the house, you're good to go. Now, think about who's going into that house? Firefighters, right? So, we've had to change a lot of the tactics and strategy that we use. Now, if you remember, you used to see pictures of fires all the time and firefighters were on a roof with an axe cutting a hole in the roof and the owner would be saying, "Hey, wait a minute, the fire's in the kitchen, what are you cutting a hole in the roof for?" Well, it's to ventilate and let all that hot gas and products of combustion. It's hard to make them come down to go out the doors and windows, they want to go up, they're naturally buoyant. So, basically, what you used to see was firefighters on a roof of structures. Today, we don't go on roofs, we don't do it. Maybe in an industrial building, maybe a commercial building we make. On a house, number one, it's probably a six or an eight-twelve pitch, so have you ever tried working it? I mean, they can't even shingle those without, you know, having safety lines on it. So, picture a guy up there with a chainsaw trying to cut holes in that roof. The other concern is because they're made out of trusses that have little metal gusset plates that just kind of stamp them together, those will fail in two and a half to three minutes, a fire explosion. So, we're not going up there because we're not going to lose a firefighter trying to ventilate a roof. We've adapted to other technologies, positive pressure attack and other things that we do to try to accommodate that ventilation factor without having to put people in dangerous positions. We're concerned about maintaining our ISO rating. An ISO rating of three, there are twenty-three departments in the state out of a thousand and seventy that have a rating of three or better, okay? Nationally, we're in the top three percent of all the fire departments in the United States. That depends on a number of things. Your ISO rating is made up of fifty percent fire department, forty percent water supply, ten percent communications. So, we're very dependent on other folks to do their jobs to make that work and we've been very successful in doing that. But maintaining our ISO rating involves manpower, it involves our apparatus, it involves our inspections and all those types of efforts. So, interesting, I haven't had a chance to do it, but it'd be interesting to add up, you can't just use property value, you'd have to go and look at the value of structures to see what the fire insurance, total fire insurance cost in Troy is for structures. We've got thirty-some odd thousand structures and then see what it would, how that would change if we went from, say, a three to a four, a three to a five or whatever. We figured out that it isn't cost-effective to go to a two. We would need to have a whole bunch of stuff and you wouldn't get that much of return on your investment to go from a three to a two. If we went from a three to a five, that may have a significant impact on what insurance, fire insurance rates are for businesses and homes in this community. Future needs, adequate staffing, volunteer firefighters and officers. One of the big factors we have there is our incentive plan. The folks that have been on council for a while are familiar with this. Our incentive plan basically is what looks like a pension, it walks like a pension, but it's not a pension, okay? Because it is a, an unqualified plan that literally on any Monday night, four of you could decide to eliminate, okay? So, now, picture somebody that's going to put in thirty years in the fire department with some expectation that they may receive this and it's always a little iffy of whether or not, is it really going to be? So, that's one of the issues that we have and just to, so that you really make sure that you understand how it works, I've heard various people talk about how lucrative it is, but basically, if you are ten, have ten years of service and are fifty-five years old and has ten contiguous years of service before you retire, you're eligible for six thousand and fifty dollars per year, okay, for ten years of service. If you're, have twenty-five years of service and you're age fifty, you are eligible for fifteen thousand, one hundred and twenty-five dollars a year. Now, that's the base amount. If you choose survivor benefits, then it's actuarially reduced based on how the age of your spouse, all those types of things. So, that's the raw number, nobody- Nobody typically gets that much because everybody's married, they've got spouses, their spouse makes them younger, whatever. And if you spend 30 years at any age, which really means 48 because you can't join the fire department until you're a minimum of 18 years old, then you might be eligible for $18,150. So some of the reports that I've heard, that people are making lots of money as a retired volunteer firefighter, they're not making it based on hand incentive. And this rate's been frozen since 2009, but we meet with the representatives of fire stations every year, and one of the major concerns that they have is the stability of the plan. So we're meeting to talk about ways that we might be able to help. Another future need for our career staff, everybody bit the bullet, everybody agreed to throw a lifetime. Well, the 1,040 hours per year in the fire department equate to about a half of an FTE. So if we had that half of an FTE back, it would ease some of those other pressures that we're experiencing in other things like inspections and those areas that at least use more help. Another future need: apparatus replacement. Costs of fire apparatus typically exceed CPI because the National Fire Protection Association publishes a standard every three to five years on what a motorized fire apparatus has to do, has to have, has to look like, things like that. Unfortunately, fortunately, depending on how things go, the NFPA standards, right now, they are going to be drafting a standard in the next two years that's going to address problems that haven't even occurred yet. But the next apparatus that we buy after the adoption of that standard will reflect those types of pricing increases. Just to give you an idea, in 1998, the NFPA adopted a standard, or a provision in their NFPA 1901 Motorized Fire Apparatus Standard that said, if you have a fire apparatus that has over, that's over 24,000 gross vehicle weight, 24,000 pounds, you must provide an auxiliary braking system. Either what's called a jake brake, you've seen them on commercial trucks, torque retarder, number of different options for that. That increased the price of fire trucks that were built on meeting that standard. No manufacturer will sell a truck in the United States without meeting that standard. That increased those trucks over $10,000 a truck. Now, that, what triggered that was an incident on the East Coast where a poorly maintained fire truck in a very hilly community was going downhill to a run, lost their brakes, couldn't stop, they hit a car with several civilians in it, and the outcome was not favorable. Okay? So because of that incident, every fire truck sold in the United States over 24,000 pounds has to have an auxiliary braking system. Doesn't make any difference if our topography is as flat as this table, if we maintain our fire trucks every six months, we go in and inspect the brakes, do all the things that we do, doesn't make any difference. We now have about eight trucks that have torque retarders and jake brakes on them. As I mentioned before, we try to smooth out those budget spikes by, you know, kind of using, for lack of a better term, like kind of an apparatus fund where we put money in it. If we make those investments on a regularly stable basis, then you don't get hit with, well, we need to replace a ladder truck, it's a million dollars. Our logic, you know, we've planned out almost 10 years, and basically, it looks like in the capital arena, if we had $525,000 a year, every year, that would provide and replace three ladder trucks, a pumper, a heavy rescue, and several other support vehicles. Fire Station Four. Fire Station Four was built in 1968. It was added on to and renovated a little bit in 1988.
Yes, sir. Excuse my geography, where is Fire Station Four?
2103 East Maple, just east of John up. So, since 19, and basically, when we did that, we learned a valuable lesson. That station cost us probably about one and a half times per square foot what it would cost to build a new station. Renovating an existing building is not necessarily the most cost-effective approach. Okay? Especially in fire stations. So what we've got is a station that is fairly old. All of our other stations have been either replaced or significantly renovated. That one hasn't. And, you know, it'd be one thing if you had all career employees. You tell somebody, go to work there. You don't like it, go someplace else. Well, we try to encourage people to want to be there. Anecdotally, about 25% of the time when we have an incident, there's somebody in the fire station to respond. Okay? Reduces response times, more efficient, et cetera. But we think we need to do something at Fire Station Four. I've engaged an architectural firm to give us a preliminary assessment of what the station deficiencies are and what options we may have, because I really don't have a clue what they're going to come back, because we haven't built a station for over 10 years since we built Station Three. So those are our future needs. Questions?
Back to your volunteers, what's the situation as far as drawing volunteers? You know, are you still getting a lot of applicants for volunteers? And where's Troy standing with the other cities around here as far as drawing them in?
Well, there's a number of things that work in our favor. One, we do not respond to medicals. The average fire department in the United States spends 80% of its resources responding to medical calls. We don't do that. So we don't overtax and overutilize our volunteers the way some places do. And when you do that, and especially when you go to a lot of those runs and you don't do anything and you have very little impact on the outcome, there's no gravitation path. Okay? So they are losing people left and right to, in the career, or in the on-call departments around us. We are very fortunate. We lose about 12 people a year, primarily to retirements every once in a while. I just had a firefighter get hired by Birmingham. Well, that's a career position, and career firefighters make a big deal out of making him burn his ID card in a ceremony, you know, that he can't be on the Troy Fire Department anymore. Okay? That's just the way it is, because we're sometimes considered a thorn in the side of our organized labor when it comes to operating fire departments. Okay? So we're very fortunate. We have applicants, we have a continuous stream of applicants. Now, making sure we get the right ones, because we do background investigations on them, things like that. They have to be available. They have to either live or work in the community, things like that. So one of the things we have done is we do have a classification of firefighters that can work in Troy, not live in Troy, but if they're available to respond to fires while they're employed and their employer agrees to that, they are eligible. And we actually have city employees. So if there is a two-hatter thing kind of going on, a little bit of, you know, that, but we're in pretty good shape. But we watch that like a hawk, we watch it continuously, because when we start to see trending, that's when we have to start paying attention. Mayor?
Chief, if you could go back a couple slides to the future needs, is that possible?
Certainly.
Yeah, right there. I've always thought that the fire department saves the city of Troy somewhere between $5 to $7 million a year by having a volunteer fire department. Would you agree to that?
I would say it's closer to $10 to $12 million.
Okay. Fair enough. And I don't know that we could ever repay, citizens could repay the fire department for that. I think it's just something that, over the years, people forget how much money we save by having a volunteer fire department. You indicated that you were putting together a stability plan, and I think I'm looking for consensus around the table that we would like to see that plan. Councilman Campbell hit on it a little bit, but I've heard recently that you're having a tougher time today than you were years ago getting volunteers.
Overall, the numbers are probably down a little bit, but then, I mean, we used to tout the fact that we had waiting lists of people to be volunteer firefighters. We probably have a handful of applications now that are at a station that's assigned as 30 volunteers that we really don't have a place for them unless we change everything we do and buy 31 sets of equipment and 31 pagers and all that stuff. But, so, yeah, we don't have the waiting list that we used to have. We're still, our, we still, I hope we're around that 165 average number. Some stations like to keep an open slot because what we've had happen, we've had a person move into town that came from, say, the East Coast, that was a volunteer firefighter out there. He comes into town, he may be self-employed, he can be a 24-hour firefighter for us, but they don't want to turn him down because there's no slot for him. So we like to keep a couple slots and just in reserve for when you get that one person that comes into town that's got experience, he's got high level of availability, he's one of those folks you can put right to work. We don't have to spend a year in the fire academy and all that other stuff before we ever get any productive work out of him. So, so, yeah, it is an issue for us, but fortunately, we've been very lucky, but, you know, this is starting to become a little bit more of an issue with the incentive plan because we're hearing it a little bit more often from our folks.
But I think from our perspective, we'd like to see that plan so that two or three years or five years from now, we're not having a problem more severe than we have. And if I could just piggyback on that, and I, it's pretty insignificant, but I feel that I need to bring it up. And I've had a discussion with Mayor Pro Tem Fleming regarding this, and three years ago, you made a decision to eliminate the banquet for the firefighters. And at the time, I understood why you did that, and maybe you want to explain why you did it, but I think we've gotten to a point where we need to revisit that, and I think it's a little something that the city can do to get back, and I think it's time that we take a look at that and maybe reinstitute that. And if I could get consensus around the table, I think that's something else that we need to look at. So maybe you could just indicate how that happened and why it happened?
Well, it happened, we've been doing an appreciation banquet since, I've only been here 38 years, and I went to my first one, the first year I started, so. But we've been doing it for 40, we've been doing it for 40-some odd years. I mean, and it was a, it started out as a, you know, as a relatively small thing, when you have 165 firefighters and spouses, and we would invite retirees, we would invite widows of retirees and things like that. So, I mean, it pretty much took up the San Marino Club. When we got into tough times financially, it just, and we heard this from a number of our firefighters, they said, hey, you know, people in the city are getting layoff notices. Okay? It doesn't seem right for us to be having a party when that's going on. So I said, works for me, we'll do that. And, you know, yeah, we still hear about it today from, you know, from some of our, you know, folks that have more longevity in the fire department, that, well, I can remember when we used to have the appreciation banquet, and it was great. Yeah, it was, but, you know, those are, that was then, this is now. So, I mean, that's up to you. That was, it basically put on by city council, it came out of the fire department budget, but that certainly is your choice, certainly to do that if you wish. Yes, sir?
I agree, you need some type of character, you know, you have volunteers, you know, willing to give up their time. The question I had along with that was, that 39, you know, 38 change average, is that normal, or is that kind of trending on the up?
No, it goes up and down a little bit every year, but basically, what we have is we get a lot of young folks, 18, 19, 20, 21 years old. They come to us, they're interested in being a career firefighter somewhere. Well, we train them, we give them experience, they're a part of the team, and in some cases, they may last 10 years. Okay? Because depending on what the job market is, we've lost our volunteer firefighters to North Carolina, we've lost them to Detroit, we've lost them to a lot of different places. But, you know, if they're interested in doing that, their mindset is they want to be a career firefighter, they're going to try to achieve that somehow. What we're having good success with, with the age thing, is basically, we're getting third and fourth-generation firefighters. I have one at Station One. His grandfather was a charter member, great-grandfather was a charter member at Fire Station One who drove the school bus in Troy. Now, the backfire to when that was. And there are stories about when the fire whistle blew and the kids were on the school bus, they got to go to a fire. Just how far back, this goes, this goes way back. His son served as a volunteer for 30 years. His grandson served as a volunteer, and he's going on 28 years right now. His great-grandson has been on the fire department for five years. Now, that is a family institution, in my mind, for community service. And that's what we do actually have a lot, we've got husband-and-wife teams, we've got father-and-son teams, things like that. But for everyone that stays or that leaves in that eight-to-10-year range to get a full-time job, we do have a considerable number, and that's what kind of pushes up to that 38. I have to share one more thing with you, and a number of folks in the volunteers are very astute financially. Some of these folks are financial planners, they're bankers, and things like that. And they figured out that, you know, waiting one more year to get a $3 increment in the multiplier wasn't worth, you know, you wouldn't, it would take eight years to recover that and, you know, to make that up if you chose to defer getting it when you were eligible. Well, they actually came to me and said, we want to, when our time is up, we want to collect our incentive, but we don't want to leave the fire department. So, I don't know if you can do that, because we've kind of made collecting incentives synonymous with retirement. Well, we checked, doesn't have to be. So we actually have what are called post-incentive firefighters right now, where they're, they have, in essence, retired, but they still show up, there's no increase in benefits, they still have to make 50% of the runs they're available for, they still have to attend 60 hours of training per year, and they love, and the thing that works for us is they can mentor younger folks, and we don't lose them. Otherwise, you'd see them once a month at a dinner meeting, they'd be sitting there playing cards, and then you wouldn't see them again for another month. So, so basically, I remember talking to John Zurlag when he was city manager, and I was kind of explaining this to him. He says, well, let me think about this for a minute. Yeah, these guys want to come back, they want to continue working for free after they just volunteered for 25 or 30 years. And I said, yeah, that's pretty much it. And he says, uh, let me think about this for a nanosecond, and then we'll, you know, so we put that program in place. But it goes to talk to the culture of our people that they don't want to quit, you know? Now, they do have to take a physical exam and some other things because, you know, heart disease is, kills 50% of all on-duty firefighters that die in the line of duty in a year. So we make them do a physical, we make sure that they're capable of performing, but we let them stay for three-year increments.
Not to distract from your comment, but I mean, that, you know, I agree that you need some type of incentive there, volunteers.
Yeah, I agree. Mayor Slater and I have had this conversation, I've had the conversation with Chief Nelson here, and I think we're to that point. It's your call, it's your people's call, but I think you'd get support, certainly from me and the majority of this council, to reinstitute the banquet, so I think that's an easy one. One thing that I'd like to know, we have these volunteers, and to me, it's very important, and I think to you as well, that we have the best equipment, and we have, safety's so important. In your opinion, chief, if you compare the equipment that we have, the apparatuses, the breathing apparatuses and so forth, how do we compare with, say, a full-time fire department? Are we measuring up to the safety standards that they are?
I have to be careful how I answer this, because this is on television. I would believe that we, by far, exceed all the standards. I don't know if you just saw in the paper the other day, Detroit has 18 ladder trucks, nobody can climb them anymore.
I know, so.
Because they haven't been inspected. We inspect every ladder truck every year, and it's done by a third-party firm. Now, that costs money.
Yes.
That's part of our budget, but the issue is, I'm going to have people climbing the ladder, and, you know, I mean, you can fall off a step ladder, you can survive. You fall off a 100-foot aerial ladder, it's usually not survivable. Okay? So we make sure all of our equipment, our breathing apparatus, everyone is flow-tested annually by a third-party independent person, not our own people, who have an incentive to say, hey, get them through there. If all those things are done, our hose is tested independently, our pumps are tested independently, so I would say that our gear and our equipment is probably... so I would say that our gear and our equipment is probably at the ninety-eight percent level. I mean, the city of Los Angeles may be more than we do, but, I mean, when you've got six thousand firefighters, you got to do that. I, I would say we're at the, at the top.
We owe that to those people that have volunteered and done that, and we have absolutely, absolutely.
And that's been our philosophy. Right now, tonight, the safety committee is meeting, and they're, they've done a year-long evaluation on new boots. And, you know, we have new boots in the budget, and those will be coming to you in a bit for new boots, but we, you know, we, we get a group of folks together, they, they look at everything that's out there, they, they test them in the field, warm weather, cold weather, all those types of things, and then they come back with a recommendation, and then we buy, I mean, that'd be crazy not to follow what their recommendation is, right? I mean, that just wouldn't make any sense.
Thank you, chief. You and I spent some time a while back, and you were so kind as to take me through the facilities, and a lot of things surprised me about our fire department. But one of the things, and you, you kind of touched on it tonight, that surprised me is the fact that you've gotten our fire department rated so high that it actually affects, as a city, our insurance rates. And, you know, again, you just barely kind of touched on that tonight, but I, maybe if you could talk a little bit about that, just to express that.
I, ISO, the Insurance Services Office, is a, an independent company that is supported by fees from insurance companies that want to have someone tell them what is the relative risk of insuring property, okay? So, if there's ten thousand insurance companies in the United States, instead of having every insurance company go around and try to figure out, well, I'm going to insure a building in Troy, let's look at their fire department, then I'm going to go to Southfield, then I'm going to go to wherever, ISO does that for everybody. Now, some insurance companies choose not to use that. State Farm is one that chooses to use an experience rating. They rate by zip code, okay, as opposed to using ISO standards. But ISO sends a team of engineers in here typically once every ten years and sometimes more frequently, and they go through, literally in six weeks, they go, they'll go out to the water department, they'll flow. How many hydrants, Rick?
Oh.
Fifty?
Yeah.
Fifty, sixty hydrants, and, and, and basically graph out the performance of those hydrants. So, go and look at all their maintenance records, because remember, water supply is forty percent of your ISO rating. Without water, the best-trained, best-equipped firefighters are really, really high-paid spectators, okay? An ass where the mouse. So, basically, they'll look at water, they come to the fire department, they look at our pump test records, that's why I said we religiously pump test every pump, so here, that's the requirement. We test every piece of hose that we have. We've got over twenty-five thousand feet of hose, so we've got enough hose to get from here all the way to Eight Mile, right?
Please.
Okay, we've got enough hose to get from here to Twenty-Eight.
This is going to get worse.
But all of those things, and then they look at our response records, we average, at a structured fire, we average about twenty-four firefighters. Now, that is huge, because there are fire departments that are neighboring to us that respond on a daily basis with six to eight firefighters to a structured fire. National standard says you have to have sixteen, okay? We have, we, we clearly exceed that. So, ISO comes through, they look at our training records, they look at all kinds of things. They spend, like I said, they spend six weeks here when, when they come, and they look at communications, they go to the police department, they look at dispatching, they look at call records, they, they literally do an audit on everything that we do, and then they score those things based on criteria and attributes that they have. And then you add up the score, and basically, depending on where you fall, numerically, that's what class you're in. So, that's how ISO works. If you have a building that is over a required fire flow of thirty-five hundred gallons per minute, that building is rated on its own merits. However, the fire department is still rated with it, because it's not going to protect itself, we have to go protect it. So, but homes, factories, businesses, schools, all those things that are insured against fire hazard, basically, most insurance companies will use ISO, because nobody else is going to take the time to do that in-depth of an analysis of how efficient the fire service is in that particular community. Is that?
Right on point. Why would State Farm not use that rating?
Well, if I can put this down. There were some fire departments that, over the years, were highly rated, and due to conditions that happened with residents, with tax base, things like that, they started to decline in capabilities. Well, ISO didn't run right out and re-rate them again, okay? So, they may have been a three in nineteen-seventy, today, they might, in reality, be a six, but ISO didn't get around to rerating them for about fifteen years, and so the insurance companies weren't collecting enough premiums to cover the loss, so they started to say, hey, we'll look at a different, and like I said, I think it was State Farm that just said, we'll go by zip code, because zip codes are a little smaller than municipalities in, in most cases, and we'll just look at experience, and that'll tell us, we'll infer from that how efficient the fire service is.
Like a loss ratio?
Yeah.
Any other questions, comments? I just have one, one further comment. I think as we move along through these presentations, we're going to see a consistent theme about furlough time, and things that happened in two thousand nine that throws just about everything in the city, and I think there's a consensus from the table here anyways that during this budgeting process, we're going to be reviewing decisions that were made in two thousand and nine that are having impact on what's happening today. So, um, that's my comment to, to the furlough time and other issues that happened in oh-nine. I don't know if that means anything to the employees or whatever, but I do think that this, this council is going to review things that, that were put in place in two thousand and nine. Any other questions?
One thing I'll add, the sheet that you've got with our FAQ sheet, we get probably one call a week from somewhere around the United States, and they ask, well, we heard a rumor that you have a volunteer fire department, the city of eighty thousand people in, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. And so, we explained, to avoid having to spend hours on the phone, we've created a, an FAQ sheet, and we have some handouts that we, we give people. So, this just kind of explains a number of those, those soft issues and some of the harder issues with incentive plan and those types of things, so I just thought I'd share that with you, too.
Did you want to sum up?
Yeah, I just want to make sure, you know, the, the goal of this whole process is to at least have a few takeaways, that's why the, that's why the pointer is on the last slide.
Oops, sorry.
No, you went, you went over too many back, that's okay. But, but I just want to make sure that I'm not hearing something that, that's not accurate and that there isn't consensus with, and where we can get consensus, I'd like to do that. So, I heard that there's a stability plan that we should be pursuing, and that includes a number of things, like the incentive plan for furlough time and the ability to get time back so that they can deal with the appropriate plan to use in a fast, fair, and predictable manner. That the banquet should be evaluated and considered going forward, and that, well, those are the two main things I, I heard, as well as capital improvement planning and funding probably in the fire department is a major issue going forward. Is those three areas, is that summing up according to what everyone else had?
If, if you're putting a capital plan, the fire station number four, evaluate?
Yeah, and I, and that's part of, yes, thank you, that's exactly right. Good, good point, because that's, that's pretty critical to plan for the future.
Is it the intent to, to do about one hour for each one of these tonight?
No, it wasn't, it was forty minutes, but Chief Mayor certainly raised that bar. So, Chief Nelson certainly didn't miss any of his minutes. So, I think, yes.
Well, I, you know, I just think we're going to want to take a break right now and come back for the next presentation, let's take five minutes, we'll, we'll assess for five.
Right on schedule, so.
You can. You stay. I would believe that we, we by far exceed all the standards.
I don't know if you just saw in the paper the other day, Detroit has eighteen ladder We inspect every ladder truck every year, and it's done by a third-party firm.
Table is yours, City Manager.
Thank you, Mayor, and City Council, and welcome back. This particular departmental presentation in the Recreation Department is kind of interesting since before I started my first day on the job here, Carol Anderson had a long and illustrious career for the city of Troy in the Recreation Department. And then before I started my first day on the job here, she was back to fill in on a temporary basis, and that may turn into a long-term assignment for Carol.
I just got a little line.
I'm used to it by now. But anyway, the reality is, I say this because Carol has done an outstanding job, not only in the interim, but going through this presentation and really bringing us, bringing me and a lot of other people up to speed in the Recreation Department. So she's got a great presentation and she's got a passion for recreation, so we're fortunate Carol's here.
Welcome. You're welcome back.
Thank you. It is good to be back, and I am honored to be here again. The mission of the Recreation Department is to enhance quality of life for residents regardless of age, disabilities, so on. We provide recreation programs, facilities, and related services to our residents and This is an overview of the staffing from 2009, '10 to present. As you can see, 2009, 2010, we had 16 full-time people. We currently have six. We have full-time equivalents, part-time people of 39, just over 39, and in 2009, 2010, there were 40 and a half. To give you a perspective, we are at staffing levels of 1978 in the Recreation Division. Oh, I should cut you back up for just a second. Prior to 2010-11, the Parks Division was part of the, we were one department, Parks and Recreation, but these staffing levels do not reflect any Parks people before the division or currently. Golf courses, as you know, golf course, golf course divisions, golf courses were contracted. We have a management contract that happened in the spring of 2010. Prior to that, there were four full-time people, and we now have eliminated those positions. We have no full-time or part-time people in the Golf Division. Aquatic Center, 2009, 2010, we had a third of a full-time person's hours were allocated to the Aquatic Center. That one way, we have no full-time hours allocated there. All seasonal people, manager, assistant managers, and support staff, lifeguards, cashiers, et cetera. In 2000, we, those are actually close to the same, 11.6 full-time equivalents, same number of people, different number of hours that those are working with the, except for the full-time person. No full-time hours are allocated in that division. Next. To enhance this, as I'm sure most of you know, there have been, there's been a push for revenue generating in this division. We have increased program fees to accomplish cost-neutral goals in the Recreation Division, Community Center, and Seniors. There has been a mandate, for lack of a better word, that those divisions are cost-neutral. We have established rental policy for shelters and reserved areas of the Aquatic Center. At one time, before these enhancements, you came into the Aquatic Center and except for food, there were no other charges. If you want to reserve areas, there currently is a charge to do that. We have increased Community Center fees and room rentals. There is no free use of the Community Center by groups, organizations, so on. At one time, there was. The Aquatic Center, when it began, it was a resident-only facility. We changed that many years ago, but we have increased marketing for the region and not just residents and close by. So we now have buy-one-get-one free coupons, CVS Local, which is similar to a coupon kind of thing, and those discounts are available to regionally. We've increased Community Center pass rates. We have revised policies to encourage different kinds of Community Center use. We now allow alcohol and the non-resident, non-resident use for rooms. We have increased fees for field use for youth athletic organizations. We charge for field, I think that was talked about a little bit, or will be, and we have increased those fees. Youth groups, Troy Baseball Boosters, Troy Youth Football, Troy Racquet Club, Troy Nature Society, we now have implemented a fee policy for the space in the Troy Today brochure for those groups. At one time, we just took those costs as our own. We've implemented a fee for all senior room activity use, including drop-ins, clubs, et cetera. And we strictly adhere to cancellation policies, refunds, and so on regarding. So what have we done to reduce costs in addition to enhancing revenues? Well, as I spoke about a minute ago, we have eliminated full-time positions, fitness coordinator, two clerical positions. We do not have a full-time Community Center manager. We eliminated three supervisor positions, superintendent of recreation, naturalist and nature center manager. As you know, the nature center operations are no longer being run by the city, and so those positions were eliminated. We have eliminated many recreation senior programs, most special events. Friends of Troy seniors have, a nonprofit has formed, and there are some programs that they are doing that we once did, but there still is an elimination of many programs that we once operated. Nature Center operations, we have eliminated, given those over to, or, we have an agreement with Troy Nature Society to, for use of the nature center. We eliminated golf staff and contracted golf management, as I mentioned, and we eliminated any free use of the Community Center by nonprofits. At one time, nonprofit Troy groups could use the Community Center as long as there was space available. And we went to an interim where they could use it once a month at Nell Cox, and we've eliminated that. There is no free use of the Community Center. We have also reduced the operating hours of the Rec Administration Office. We used to be open on Saturday afternoon and evening until 10:30, we've reduced those hours. We have reduced staffing levels at the Norphool, the Aquatic Center, and Community Center, and we have reduced training hours for both full and part-time staff. This gives you an idea of the programs and events, activities that we've eliminated. To point out a few, you may be familiar with Jam Fest. We, it was a, an event, series of events, six evenings in the summer at the Aquatic Center for teens, a really hard group to program for. We eliminated that. That was a cooperative partnership with Troy Community Coalition, Police Department, ourselves, and some other civic groups. We eliminated that. We eliminated lacrosse leagues, daddy-daughter dances, Family Festival, 5,000 people in one night in one of our parks in the summer. We've eliminated that event. Senior volleyball, senior book club, some other senior activities. T-ball, volunteer banquet for seniors, for volunteers, obviously. Food distribution, surplus food, we have eliminated. Now, some of these things, yes?
Maybe you're going to answer this, but did we eliminate these because of the cost associated with them, that they did not support themselves, like Jam Fest did not support itself?
Well, yes. In many cases, that is true.
And staffing?
We also eliminated some programs that somebody else was willing to take over. We've definitely eliminated programs because we didn't have the staffing to run them anymore. And I don't mean the staffing onsite, I mean the administrative staff to coordinate the activity. So it's threefold. Was it producing any money? Did we have the staff time to do it, and would anybody else do it? Yes.
Was it also taken into consideration whether or not, some of these programs I've thought of, even though I obviously wasn't involved in some of them, but we also, I also remember that we got a lot of communications after some of these changes were made about certain programs that people were upset or wished that we hadn't gotten rid of. So those are probably the three things that you looked at. Were any of these programs just not performing that well? Was that also something that was considered?
There's, that was a consideration, along with those other things. But T-ball, very popular program. I would call it a performing program, but we still eliminated it because somebody else was able to do it. Family Festival, the event, high-profile event, lots of recognition about it. We just didn't have staff coordinated it. So all of those things were taken into consideration. And every day, I get calls, or nearly every day, are you going to put this program back in? Are you going to put this program back in? So there's still a demonstrated need for that. And this slide, after we do capital history, you know, as we talked a little bit about the cost-neutral goal of this division, if you look at the revenue of Recreation, Community Center, senior activities, and the miscellaneous revenue, in 2009, 2010, $4 million. Today, $3.3 million generated. Now, let me say, that is 2012, 2013, our budgeted numbers. The other three columns are all actuals. So you go down and look at the expense of that same year, 2009, 2010, those three activities, $4 million in expense, $3.1 million in expense budgeted this year. There is a revenue over expense in both of those years. $10,000, almost $11,000 in 2009, 2010, and budgeted $164,000 for this year. So we are meeting the cost-neutral of the direct cost of those divisions. We are now also looking at paying for some of the administration and moving for the administrative budget of the department. While the revenues have gone down in 2012, 2013 budget, would make sense with the elimination of a lot of those programs and the expenses as well. So questions in there?
Our goal is to be cost-neutral, and it seems to me that '09 through '12, we were more than cost-neutral. We actually had more revenue than expenses. So why would we then make the jump to eliminate all these programs if we knew we were going to see more revenue shortfalls? I guess I don't understand why we see revenue shortfalls, even though we're increasing our pay-to-play, so to speak, with all of these programs that we have.
Is your question, I'm not sure it, of your question, is the question that in 2009, 2010, we were cost-neutral and we are today?
Right.
So why did we make those cuts?
Yeah, so why did we have to make those cuts in this particular department?
Okay, we did make some of those cuts before the start of 2009, during that budget year, so these are actuals. Prior to that, I would, we didn't, we were not cost-neutral.
Okay.
At one time, the Community Center cost us $1 million in direct cost. It was before 2009, 2010 that that $1 million subsidy was eliminated.
So we right-sided that prior to what we're seeing here in this?
Yes.
Okay.
Madam, I mean, Mr. Mayor, just to add to that, before we actually did the restructuring, there probably were some layoffs which occurred.
Yes.
Before we even did the restructuring out of the crash, there were some preliminaries. So expenses were reduced even before we had an organized restructuring, because we just knew that we had to do some layoffs.
Next. Okay, and then that, this slide will show you the golf course, golf courses in the Aquatic Center, 2009, 2010, actual. We were expenses over revenue in the golf courses of $613,000, and this year's budget, we are $487,000. Thereabouts. Aquatic Center, $116,000 in 2009, 2010, actual, and while the budget is showing in '12, '13, $21,000 expense over revenue. '11, '12, we were $9,000, $9,500 revenue over expense. Capital, as you can see, there's been a limited amount of capital for both the Community Center and Aquatic Center, no capital in the last three years for this budget year, and the last two years for the Community Center, and limited funds for the Aquatic Center for the last three years. There is no capital funding allocated in the Community Center nor the Aquatic Center this year. Good. Pressures and concerns today?
Councilman Tease.
So is there deferred maintenance on the Community Center, or is that the issue?
That is. That is one of my pressures and concerns that I'll talk to you about.
See, I apologize for jumping ahead. I'm mistaken. Stealing your thunder.
Happy, happy thinking that way.
Mr. Rowland?
Mr. Mayor, someone who sat in some of the meetings and what was decided related to capital projects, the city manager at that time made a real directed concern more along roads and things that would only pay for capital costs for things that were in dire need. So there were no, nothing identified as a dire need or an emergency or something to save a capital. I mean, would literally have to spend dollars to save the capital project or the capital asset.
Or preserve it.
To preserve it. You had to do it.
Right.
And so at that time, there were no, and those two assets didn't have any problems to that level. They, I'll tell you, they did bring up certain things like pumps and things of that nature.
Oh, for the pool, right?
Yeah. The parts of that, we'll see, we are seeing today. Yeah, I won't chug to that one, but I will.
Could I just, before we jump up, I have a lot of people asking me about golf courses, you know, and if we could just back up to that for a second. Where it shows that the golf course revenue is $2,606,000 and the expenses are almost $3 million. At least there was, I think, a perception that we were getting close to being cost-neutral on that. Is this a bond, is this a bond expense issue, I would assume, correct?
The golf courses for many years, several, before 2009, 2010, covered their direct costs, but we have not been able to cover the entire cost of the bond for Sanctuary Lake. So, yes, the direct cost earned, covered by revenues.
And is it your opinion?